Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Town Council meeting of May 2, 2023. As you can see, we remain in the hybrid model as always. I will start with roll call. Counselor Meany?
Present.
Counselor McGuire?
Present.
Counselor Chappell?
Present.
And I am Counselor Carter. Town Manager Nate Rudy is online with us this evening. Everyone, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is our consent agenda. Are there any motions to remove any of the items from the consent agenda? Dan?
Yeah, I'd like to remove the April 18 minutes from the consent agenda.
Regular meeting?
Yes.
So item three is removed. With that, I will take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Any comments? Dan?
Yes.
Krista?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
And I'm also a yes. I'm looking for a motion to approve the minutes of April 18, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Dan?
On packet page 12, it says, basically, it says that in the third paragraph, it says that I think the legislature needs to be more thought out. And it, basically, it should be legislation. It's just a change there. It's not much, but it does make more sense that way. And then my only other comment on the minutes are the, I know we have somebody new that's doing them, and I appreciate the fact that they're doing them. One format change I'd like to suggest is that whenever the speaker changes, it should be a separate paragraph, just so that I think it's easier to, not only easier to read, but also to refer to, because some of these blocks of text are pretty big. And if the minutes are something to, you know, for folks to be able to go through and see what happens, I just think that would be a little easier. So that's just a suggestion.
Okay. Anything else?
No, that was the only change.
Any other comments? Dan?
Yes.
Krista?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
And I'm also a yes. Next item on the agenda is public comments of non-agenda items. Limit three minutes per person. Comments are intended for information sharing, not discussion. Comments in excess of three minutes are welcome at the end of the agenda prior to adjournment. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on non-agenda items? You'll have to go up to the podium. Introduce yourself and where you live. And sign in, please.
I have a question on the process for the auditor's report later on. If you have any questions, how is that going to be handled? And is the auditor present this evening to give the report?
No, the auditor is not present. There will be information shared about the audit, and then the audit will be, is going to be posted this week to the website. If there are specific questions about the audit, then
Well, there are questions on the audit report, and that I think the auditor needs to answer. I mean, you couldn't answer in the town meeting, you couldn't answer. It's not your role. It's the auditor's role to answer the questions for the specific audit report.
If you have questions about the specific, specific questions about the audit, FY '22 audit, then you would submit them to the town manager, and he would obtain the responses for you.
None resident? Oh. So the process is going to be just yours. Someone's going to read the report?
I'm going to read a statement regarding the budget and the audit. And then all of the material will be available online in detail. Is there anyone else here who would like to speak to non-agenda items? Okay, and not seeing any hands up online or in chat. So I will close public comment on non-agenda items. Are there any motions to make adjustments to the agenda this evening?
I have none.
Okay. Next item is presentation. The first one is related to the Budget Financials and Audit Update. "We want to make you aware of an error that was identified following our April 11 presentation of the town's FY 2024 budget. The budget summary spreadsheet presented at that meeting included inaccurate revenue figures, which resulted in an inaccurate percentage breakdown of the proposed tax increase between the town and the school. All other figures and budget documents as previously presented are accurate. There are no other changes to the proposed budget or the previously approved warrant that will appear on the ballot. The correct percentage split of the projected mill rate increase is town 52%, TIF 4%, school 40%, and county 4%. For a medium-priced home based on the U.S. Census of 2022, in Gray of $276,300, the town is projecting an annual increase of approximately $290 a year or $24 a month in town taxes to support the important work to be done in the FY 2024. A reminder, the actual mill rate cannot be, rate increase cannot be calculated until final information is available later this year. This is only a projection. We apologize for any confusion and the misrepresentation of the percentages. Please disregard the budget summary spreadsheet dated April 11, 2023. That spreadsheet has been stamped disregard on the town's website. A new spreadsheet will be used moving forward, available on the website and linked to the old summary. This information will also be included in a mailer to all taxpayers. The school district's budget and their increase will appear as a separate question on the ballot. Regarding the FY '22 audit, under Article 2, Section 16 of the Town Charter, the town is required to engage an independent auditor, who must submit their report to the Town Council and the Town Manager within 180 days of the end of the fiscal year. The council is permitted to grant an extension of that timeframe for cause. The FY 2022 audit began in July 2022, and around August 8, 2022, the auditor notified the town they had concerns regarding certain payments made and with transactions and fund transfers that had not been made. As a result of these concerns, the Town Council granted an extension to the auditor, so the auditor could conduct a further review. The Town Manager received the audit report on April 11, 2023, and it will be published on the town's website, as I mentioned just a minute ago. Two issues were identified. Number one, approximately $27,000 in municipal funds were misappropriated in FY 2022. Financial, number two, financial accounting errors that resulted in transactions and transfers that were not made when required. We are extremely troubled by these findings and take them very seriously. Our goal is to be as transparent as possible about these issues, and we've taken steps to ensure they do not occur in the future. In response to the misappropriations of funds, we have consulted with legal counsel and referred the matter to state and local law enforcement for further investigation. As this is now being investigated, we are not at liberty to discuss it further. We will keep the town informed regarding this matter as we are able to do so. The Town Council is as disappointed and angry about this discovery as we are sure you will be of learning of it. We will pursue all available remedies to ensure the town recovers these missing funds. In response to the financial accounting errors, we have ensured that all funds are now accounted for and available. The auditor has corrected all transactions and transfers that were required adjustment and has completed a comprehensive reconciliation of the town's accounting for the current FY 2023 year. This resulted in a net positive increase to available funds and did not negatively impact this fiscal year or next fiscal year's budget. We recognize this is a fortunate outcome, and it could have turned out differently. We do not want to see this situation repeated and are committed to ensuring it does not happen again. We are reviewing all town fiscal procedures, practices, and policies, and will implement whatever additional controls are necessary to prevent this from happening again. The Town Manager has already begun implementing additional procedures and controls, which he will speak to now. Nate?
Hello, Counsel. I'm going to read from a statement that is also going to be posted to the town website along with other material, including the audit report. "When I started working as Town Manager for Gray in March 2021, I discovered that the town's former Finance Director was not submitting regular monthly bank reconciliation reports, which show whether the fund balances reflected in the town's financial records match the balances in the town's multiple bank accounts. I asked the Finance Director to immediately begin providing these reports for my review and for review by the town's Finance Committee. At that time, I was not aware of any additional financial reporting needs, as none were identified by staff, committees, our banking partners, or the town's contracted municipal auditing firm, RHR Smith. Upon my return from an extended and unplanned absence in July 2022, I was advised by the town's new Finance Director on August 8 that as part of the standard annual audit of the 2021-2022 fiscal year ending June 30, 2022, she and RHR had identified discrepancies in the town's financial reports. I was updated in November 2022 that the FY '22 audit report would not be delivered on the normal timeline as additional work was required. And in December, I signed an additional contract with RHR beyond the base municipal audit to assist with bank reconciliations for fiscal year '23, the current fiscal year, to bring the town reporting up to the current time. Over the fall of 2022, I worked with the town's Finance Director and Human Resources Director to prepare an attached schedule of financial reporting, which has been implemented in part and will be fully implemented now that the fiscal year '22 audit and fiscal year '23 reconciliations have been completed. We have also implemented online transaction review capabilities and will implement a dual-control review of transactions prior to payment release now that we are fully staffed in the administration office. I have recommended that council add another position to the Town Clerk's office, which if funded in the fiscal year '24 budget as proposed, will give the town the capacity to add a partial-time accounts payable and payroll clerk to our staff. And attached to this memo is the schedule of financial reporting that we have come up with and started implementing last fall. Thank you."
Thanks, Nate. "The issues identified in the FY 2022 audit are being addressed and did not negatively impact the current FY '23 budget, aside from one revenue figure which was not carried forward correctly. That error does not negatively impact the proposed FY 2024 budget. The expense and warrant articles approved by the Town Council to be voted on by the residents are correct and will appear on the ballot as presented. Ultimately, it is always up to the residents to decide if the benefits found in the FY 2024 budget are worth the additional taxes needed to pay for them. As always, the council and the Town Manager are available to discuss the budget and answer questions, specific questions that you may have. We appreciate your understanding that we are not at liberty to discuss other aspects of the audit finding while the further investigation is ongoing. It is a criminal investigation. We are also always happy and willing to answer questions that we can, and though there are issues with the audit we're not at liberty to discuss with, we will keep you updated as that information becomes available." Any other comments?
Now that sums it up.
Yeah. All right. Thank you all for coming out. I know this is not information that you wanted to hear. It's not information that we wanted to receive. So if you do have specific questions, in particular about the audit or the budget, once the material is posted, please feel free to reach out to any of us or to the Town Manager. We will answer what we can, and if we can't, we will advise if it's related to something that we're not allowed to speak to. The next item on the agenda is the weight limit ordinance revision, and I believe we have town staff here to talk us through a possible update. That's on packet page 30.
What's that?
Yeah.
Okay. Doug Webster, Planning Director. We provided a summary of the changes. This has been through quite a few discussions with the council. On Town Council Packet Page 30, there is a memo that summarizes the changes. And then beginning on Council Packet Page 31 through 35 are the strike-through underline changes. As of the compilation of the packet, we had not had input from legal. The only change that legal recommended is midway down Town Council Packet Page 33. Legal counsel recommended removing or the posted section of Shaker Road. So that is the only change to the strike-through underline version in the Town Council Packet. The memo
Was that, I'm sorry, Doug, was that section added? Was that the DOT feedback, though? They wanted a distinction between the local and the state aid road?
The input from the attorney, the town only has the authority to do, to regulate this ordinance over town ways.
Right, but the DOT has signed off on it, so I think they wanted us to just distinguish that or Shaker Road, section of Shaker Road is separate from the local roads. We can, you can work that out with Kristin between now and the first read if you want. I don't think it materially changes the ordinance substantively, since that road's already listed, but just to make sure that that addresses both the DOT and the legal.
Check with DOT.
Yeah.
It appears as though we have a conflict between what DOT wants and what
And what legal might be recognized.
Yep.
I had another question.
Yeah.
We've adopted, or DOT has suggested, we adopt the 23,000 pound weight limit. Is that correct?
Why don't we just, you want to just go through one through five, make sure we're in agreement? Those are their, they're suggestions, but we don't have to.
Yep, no, we can do that. That makes sense.
Okay, so the first one is that weight limit, so why don't we go ahead and talk about that?
I know that other communities, like earlier in our workshop, we were looking at traffic ordinance from Yarmouth, and they use 18,000 pounds for some roads that are, I don't know, I haven't had a chance to read the whole ordinance, so I don't know if they have a different standard for those roads, but I wondered if roads like Short Mayo, which is waitlisted now, if the 23,000 pound weight limit there is sufficiently low enough to keep the damage that we had on that road from happening in the future.
And I thought originally, when we had talked about this, that we had set a lower weight for Short Mayo.
Originally, we did, yes, but I think that that, that's changed under this, this discussion as we add, I'll call it Short Shaker for lack of another word, another way to distinguish it to the weight ordinance.
Is that something that you'd like to?
Well, I just, I was just asking, I guess, your opinion from the, I think we had.
Its vehicle is not in excess of 10,000 pounds for a mile road and road street.
Yeah, so we already have a lower limit.
Yeah.
So will that change under this, I guess is my question?
I don't think so.
Okay, all right.
I don't think so.
So it's just lowering the 20, from 26 to 23, and that's because that's the standard the DOT uses?
Yes, I think if you were to deviate from the 23, I suspect that both DOT, as well as Public Works, would have comments about that. And if you wanted to take the additional step for the 18, that's probably going to be contingent on the road base, the drainage, et cetera.
Yeah, exactly, yep.
No, I think 23 is fine for Short Shaker.
Okay. I know that we had to do a significant amount of work to Short Mayo, above and beyond just repaving it. And so just looking to, I guess, protect our interests so that we don't end up having to do that again.
Yeah, I like the lower limit for those two.
Okay.
I'm happy to run that by Public Works. If the council's objective is to get this on the books, it could be ready for first reading on, at your meeting on the 16th. But that's your call.
Yeah, we can always update it later. I just
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, I think we should try to go for the first read.
Okay.
The second one was increasing the period from seasonal road postings can be in effect, and I have no problem with expanding that. Anybody have any problem with that?
No.
Since we had to do it this year.
Yep, exactly. Next one is adding the frozen road exemption to allow passage when roads are not susceptible to damage, and I'm not for this at all. I think it defeats the purpose from a safety standpoint.
I guess I want some clarity around that, so that, that basically means our ordinance is not in effect during the winter. Is that correct?
No.
When the road's frozen.
It's when the, yeah, so for instance, you can have, you can, you could work at, you know, 5:00, 6:00 o'clock in the morning, and that road's frozen, but by 10:00 in the morning, it may not be. And there are, other communities have standards for identifying whether the road meets that criteria for you being able, as a frozen road, so to speak, even though it may be during a time that it's posted. So there are some checks and balances in there, and Public Works does have the ability to make that call. So I think it's a layer of flexibility that it just allows people who move equipment and move things, an opportunity to move them during the time when the road's posted. And it's my understanding, if it's done properly, it's not going to damage that road.
But was this only during the time of seasonal postings, or I, I read this to be a frozen road exemption for our weight limit ordinance also for the three roads we've identified. Is that?
I believe it's only during the time period, late winter, spring, early spring, when the roads are posted.
It would lift the weight limit on the roads when they're frozen. So, yeah.
When they meet the threshold.
Yeah, and see, for me, it's, it's just too confusing.
Yeah.
Especially since we have limited deputy coverage right now. We're already facing an enforcement issue. And all of the three roads that are listed are, have alternatives, and those roads will be frozen, too. So to me, it just doesn't make any sense to add that layer of complication when we already have an issue with enforcement.
I, I agree. I thought it was confusing and opened the door for people to start what we're trying to accomplish, so.
Marty? You got to pull your mic down.
Do what we have to do to preserve the road.
Three to one. Move on.
So no on number three? Four, changing the appeal process to go through the Town Manager rather than the DOT. A state law does not give DOT authority to review that town permitting decision, so obviously that's okay. Removing language regarding the DOT enforcement, again, that's a given with number four. Any other questions or concerns?
Yeah, I just had a question regarding the term townway. So the concern for DOT was only in the section towards the end, or which section was it?
Purpose, maybe? Page 31, maybe?
Was it 31? No, it wasn't 31. It was the one where we were just, the lawyer was, that's
Oh, okay, that's 30.
33, yeah, section 33, page 33, section 501.7 under permits. It seems that's the only space, and if we take it out with the legal counsel's recommendation, where we're talking about how the only road that's not a townway is Shaker Road. So I just, I just want to make sure that when we're referring to our ability to regulate town ways in the rest of this ordinance, we're not somehow eliminating Shaker Road from that regulation.
Yeah, that's, that's the conflict. So the DOT wanted, I think, it listed because it isn't a townway. It's a state aid road. And DOT needs to provide permission for that, and then the attorney said to strike that. So I think we just need to figure out how to satisfy the DOT's concern
Right.
in a legal way, in the ordinance.
Okay.
That was all I had.
Well, they, they share the same name, too, so I think that's the opportunity for confusion.
Yes, that's right, too. Yep, that's another point. Any other comments on this one? Doug, you have what you need?
I believe so, yes. No on three and yes on the others in the memo. And bring closure to the apparent, not conflict, that's too strong, difference of opinion with the DOT and legal on the
Short Shaker language.
Page 33.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Doug.
Thanks to Kristin. She did a lot of work on this.
Yeah, thank her.
Thank you, Krista.
Next item on the agenda is a public hearing. Actually, I need to have, actually, no, I'll wait. I'm going to open the public hearing to review proposed changes to the zoning ordinance, Chapter 402, with regards to accessory dwelling units, ADUs, and approve a public hearing at the May 11, 2023 Planning Board Meeting, the second reading and public hearing before the Town Council on May 16, 2023. Proposed changes include setting a maximum footprint for ADUs, editing references to comply with state law, updating Table 402.5.3 regarding zoning district uses, adding references regarding exemption from parking requirements, adding reference to home occupation use within an ADU, updating the definition of accessory apartments, and updating the accessory apartments section. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on the ADU ordinance changes? Just make sure you introduce yourself and your address and log in, please.
Hi, Bob Coleman, 15 Valley High Road, Gray. I couldn't tell, reading the material regarding ADUs, whether the town supported ADUs or didn't support ADUs. So I wanted to just say a couple things. I personally am very supportive of ADUs for several reasons, and again, I couldn't quite tell where the town leadership stands on this. But I, I support ADUs for, for two big reasons. One is I think it helps make housing more affordable to a lot of people. And I'm concerned about housing affordability, not so much for my generation, but for the, the generation coming. Everyone knows what's happened to the price of housing over the last several years, and now interest rates are high, and it's just way more expensive for young families to acquire housing. So that's a huge benefit to ADUs, and I'll, I'll get to that in just a second. But the second thing is I, I'm, I'm interested in the preservation of open space. I serve on the Open Space Committee, and I feel like ADUs provide us the ability to provide more housing in the town without having to break new lots and build new roads and add new infrastructure. So I personally am very supportive of ADUs. But the reason I wanted to come tonight is because I'm not sure I understand the restrictions around 750 square feet and single and single, single-story ADUs. And I'll admit, this is a personal thing, I have an ADU planned in my house that was going to be bigger than seven hundred and fifty square feet and was going to be two stories. But just to explain the, the, the context here, the, the, a lot of people think of ADUs as just for young families moving into a small apartment. I'm on the backside of that. I have a large house that I built with my wife twenty, almost thirty years ago. We raised a family there, they've all moved out. The perfect way to transition that home to one of my, my daughters or, or sons is to build an ADU for me and move into that ADU. But asking me to do it in seven hundred square feet when I've had a thirty-five hundred square feet colonial for thirty years, doesn't, I don't understand the rationale for that. I certainly understand the aesthetics, I understand soil conservation, I understand all of the things. I don't understand the limitations on size. Because to me, bigger and better ADUs make for more revenue for the town. We, if, if I remember right, we charge more money by the amount of square foot. So a bigger ADU is, is bigger revenue, it's also generally going to be a much nicer structure. And in my situation, if I can't build that ADU, I'm going to have to take two acres that I have and build a new house. And there goes open space. And so I, I just wanted to express that I, I don't know that I understand that limitation. And I would ask that, that if we're worried about something, that that seven hundred and fifty square foot limit fixes, I would ask that we address the specific thing that we're, that we're concerned about. You know, is it that you don't want fifteen-bedroom ADUs? I get it, so, but write specific regulations that address that. Don't just paint with a broad brush and say, no more than seven hundred and fifty square feet or no two-story ADU. So that's my general comments for ADUs.
Those are both, and I'm, I'll have you stay there. Those are both really great points and actually points that we discussed. Just to help people understand the changes that are being done to the ADU, the state legislature passed a law called LD two zero zero three in the last session. And that actually is mandating or allowing the state to step in and regulate housing at the municipal level. So that is new for all municipalities. We are required to comply with that law. There are different sections of the law, and we're starting with ADUs. The reason why the AD, we had ADU ordinance on our books, some towns don't, some do. Most of the changes, almost all of them, are state mandated changes. We do have the ability to cap the square footage and the height. And the reason why we are doing that is because there are other sections of LD two zero zero three which will increase your density allowance wherever single-family homes are located. And so the accessory dwelling provision is more to make sure that you're adding a, a unit that is accessory to an existing structure versus being able to, instead of being able to put one house, you'll be able to put two, double that density or a duplex, which would allow for larger secondary density on an existing footprint. So other parts of LD two zero zero will open up that density to allow people to do different things with their property, not necessarily just within the ADU model. Does that make sense?
So if it's more than seven hundred and fifty square feet, it's not an ADU, but it's something else, a duplex or?
It's like a sec, it's like a duplex, correct. And other areas of LD two zero zero will loosen up that density wherever there are single-family homes.
Does that bring additional requirements, if you will?
We're still waiting for the, yeah, we're still waiting for the legislature's rulemaking to be done. In fact, the law they passed, all municipalities are supposed to comply with it by seven one, which is obviously a couple of months away. And we don't, do not have the rulemaking from the state level right now. So there are several bills before this session of the legislation that are, are likely going to extend the deadlines for municipalities for us to comply. Once we have that rulemaking from them, we'll have a better understanding of what those requirements may or may not be for that additional density.
Okay, so I guess my only general comment would be to, whatever we do, let's try to encourage, or not discourage or limit ADUs. Let's make sure that we can, you know, situations like mine and other, I'm not, I'm sure I'm not the only one, but where, where limits make it hard to do, let's just make sure that we try not to do that, that would be my.
Yeah, LD two zero zero three essentially does not allow municipalities to prohibit ADUs anymore.
Yeah.
So it is opening it up.
Good, thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks for all that you guys do.
Dan?
If I can to just, you know, there's, there is a pattern of legislation that's coming whereby the, the, the legislation is passed and the rules get kicked into the future. You know, we're still trying to sort out the cannabis laws, and how long ago is that passed? It's a bad habit, I think, that the legislature's getting into. And we're in a pickle here of trying to meet the sort of letter of the law to have something on the books, but not knowing what all the rules are going to be. So we have been cautious. It is going to get more complicated because there are different kinds of neighborhoods in, in Gray. There are places where you could, you know, build whatever you want, no one would ever see it. But then there's other neighborhoods that are quite small, and, and those neighborhoods already have a lot of density. So this is basically the first bite of the apple, and there's, there's going to be a lot more to come about on this one, I'm sure. I don't know how long it's going to get trickled out for, but.
Ma'am? Just introduce yourself.
That's some of our thinking.
Or miss, whichever you prefer.
You, hey you.
Hey you.
I'm Lena Reichert from Sasha's Way in Gray, and I just want to mention, I, I think this new regulation, this new legislation is a gross overreach of government authority, and it's a shame that municipalities are no longer being allowed to plan. You know, we have comprehensive planning committees and huge documents of what we want our city, our town to look like over the next decade, two decades. Planning for school departments, how much capacity can we handle? And so this new state regulation into what we can and cannot decide for our community is really, really frustrating, especially when I know how hard some of the folks in the planning and development areas of our municipalities work to try to bring long-term projects into what the future should hold. That being said, I, I also wanted to say I value the need for affordable housing. But if there isn't good caps on what is an ADU versus a two-family home, you end up with two-family homes everywhere or developments going in that might have a lot of that, which we do need to keep in mind how that's going to affect our school departments. And once our school departments start reaching our max, imagine what our mill rate's going to be when we start building those new schools. So I just, that's part of the consideration, I think, and I just, I just, I feel bad for everybody in the planning world right now with that.
Thank you.
Big frustration, and I think we should all pay attention to legislation and maybe start encouraging them to do more research before voting on their things.
Yeah, I'm glad you raised that. When LD two zero zero was before the legislature, last season, uh, last session, we did compile a, a letter to our legislative team and did, and did submit it on behalf of the town. We do feel that there are issues with home rule authority, and there are several conflicts between LD two zero zero three and the comprehensive plans that we spend a lot of time and, and energy creating. They did make some last-minute changes to LD two zero zero three based on that feedback because there was a large amount of feedback from municipalities all across the state. But in some places, we're not happy with all of the changes that they made or the lack of changes. And at this point, we encourage anyone who has feedback, positive or negative, to reach out to their legislative team. We do have representatives and senators, so they would be the appropriate person to, to send that feedback to. Any other comments on the ADU?
I just want to throw out there, one thing that we're not sure of is how the new senior tax credit in the ADU will work. There's already been, I've talked to a couple of people who have said they, they've been able to cap their taxes and now plan to build an ADU on that law, which won't do anything as far as taxes are concerned. So it's another one of those things where you have the confluence of a bunch of different efforts colliding together. And how all that will shake out, there's no way for us to predict that, so we're taking baby steps.
Yep. I'm not seeing anyone online with their hand up or in chat. Last call, I will close the public hearing. So I'm looking for the mo, a motion for the council to remove the proposed changes to the zoning ordinance, chapter four oh two, with regards to accessory dwelling units from the table.
So moved?
Second.
Marty?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Krista?
Yes.
And I'm also a yes. I'm looking for a motion for the council to approve a public hearing at the May eleventh, twenty twenty-three planning board meeting and a second reading and public hearing on May sixteenth, twenty twenty-three to review and approve proposed changes to the zoning ordinance, chapter four oh two, with regards to accessory dwelling units.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, comments? So the changes that we're looking at this evening and the reason why we tabled it was related to the square footage limit. We had a recommendation of six sixty, we went up to eight hundred, and we settled in our last discussion on seven fifty to start with. And then as we progress with LD two zero zero three and see how the rest of the density rolls out in changes, we can always come back and take a look at this limit to see if it's necessary to change it.
There, there is another component to our ordinance that we added, which is that if the existing primary dwelling is less than seven hundred and fifty square feet, that the ADU could only be ninety percent of the size of the existing structure. And one of the reasons we did that was on the, sort of, the smaller neighborhood side. But as the rules become clearer, we may be able to go the other way with that also. So that's, you know, again, our initial step, if you will.
Yeah, and the other piece of this was code enforcement, and so having Tammy weigh in on it and give us some direction on trying to keep it as an accessory to a, a single dwelling versus having them equal in size was a component. Are there any additional questions or comments on, on it? Okay, Marty?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Krista?
Yes.
I'm also a yes. Next item on the agenda is action items, and I'm looking for a motion for the council to approve a weight limit waiver for the main department of transportation's work on Main Street.
So moved?
Second.
Okay, and just for those who are present or looking at our packet on package page forty-nine, this is not the Main Street project we're all patiently waiting for. That's going to be a few years down the road. This is an emergency fix that the DOT agreed to make for us. We've had a couple of sinkholes in town in the large intersection, and that is actually stormwater infrastructure collapsing under the road. The Main Street project, the large project that is in the planning stage, is an MDOT project, and it's because they're required to come and fix the stormwater under Main Street from the large intersection for as lo, as far out as it goes, which is on the way out of town. But they're also going to reconstruct the road all the way to New Gloucester Town Line. We can't wait, the additional projected five years before they put a shovel in the ground to actually do the construction on Main Street. And so they have agreed to come and do a patchwork fix on that specific area close to Yarmouth Road to prevent further sinkholes from occurring. Nate?
Thank you, counselor. Counselor, I just want to point out that on packet page fifty, there is a signature sheet for you as the municipal officials of Gray. I would ask that if you approve this, um, this request from them, that you please sign that. And then there's additional signature sheets that I will take care of with them related to the project.
Okay, I'm presuming Jonathan might have a copy of that for us before we leave tonight. Any other questions or comments on this, Dan?
Yeah, Nate, I think for you, there are portions of the application, well, it's really, it just hasn't been filled out. We've done this with MDOT before when they've had road construction projects in town. Is this specifically just for the work that's being done at the corner of Yarmouth Road and Main Street?
Yes.
Okay.
That we'll, we'll fill in whatever specifics and details are, are left or allotted from the document as, as we go. But yes, the scope is the ramp project for Gray Corner.
Okay, thank you.
Krista?
Um, I just had one question. In the forms provided, the DOT notes that the municipality may require the contractor to obtain a satisfactory bond to cover the cost of any damage that might occur as a result of the over-limit loads. I just would like some clarity on what type of damage that covers. I know further on in the documents, it says, you know, standard, standard wear and tear is not covered. So I'm, I'm just wondering if it's worth our while to pursue that requirement from the contractor or if it, it's really not going to, it would be like just covering really unusual circumstances and just.
Nate, go ahead.
Counselor, I will get some detailed information for you about that, get a better response from DOT.
Doug is, Nate, Doug is indicating he may have the response. Hold on, Doug, go ahead.
Thank you. So this is, as it indicates on the, it's point oh four of a mile, it's only two hundred feet. And it's the catch basins at the, the first hundred and fifty feet or so of Yarmouth Road, as well as the intersection. And the, if you, if the council recalls from last summer, the summer before, there was actually a failure, an emergency. I'm working with Coral Palmer to see if there is the ability to have the, this work, work in conjunction with a long-term vision for Main Street, similar to that which the town did at North Raymond Road intersection. DOT seems to think that, okay, that's all going to come out when we do Main Street, but if there's a way to gain some economies. My sense with a bond is that it's probably not a big, probably not super important at this juncture, given that the town is working towards Main Street improvements as well as Yarmouth Road. Typically, that covers things like tracks, metal tracks on the road, if it's a hot summer day, that type of thing. So it's, given the shortly forthcoming, we hope, reconstruction, I think it's a relatively minor issue.
Okay, yeah, when I was reading through this, I wasn't entirely clear what portion of two oh two it was referencing. So if it's just that small portion, that's going to be redone in the next four or five years, that perhaps.
It is, and unfortunately, if, for those that remember when Steve LaValle was Public Works Director, even Steve LaValle was concerned about, and these are the, I think they call, it's called a cone? I'm sure there's some people in the room here that know a lot more than I do about it, but it, it's the upper part of the catch basin that's failing, and of course, with all the truck traffic. And unfortunately, it doesn't appear as, as though they're going to hold out until we can realize the, the construction on Main Street. That's what's driving this.
Dan?
So they're just repairing what's there, they're not replacing what's there?
I think it says replacement, which is what was.
I don't think they can repair it, I think it's so damaged.
Well, I guess my question is, one of the things that we're in the process of is trying to determine this capacity of the stormwater system in, through Main Street and Yarmouth Road. So if they replace it now, I just wonder if that will be a bottleneck and maybe a limiting factor when we get into the rest of the design if we wish to increase the volume through there.
And I think it's more, to draw on your analogy, I think it's more of an island, really, because of its location. Most of the stormwater that comes down Yarmouth Road gets directed.
It isn't going to make it all the way there.
And so, and although there's a connection to the Main Street system that ends up daylighting at the cemetery, this is really an island.
Okay, all right.
But that's what I'm working with Will on, is trying to make sure that if, if this is going to be a replacement as it's billed, let's make sure that we're designing this island of stormwater to be in line with fifty-year, hundred-years, whatever we're headed because of the nominal cost increase, given that the work's already being done.
Good, because once they come. Good, because once they come and do it, they're not going to be back in my lifetime. I know that for sure.
Not, not the fix, the big project.
Probably not yours either, Krista.
That's right. The big project, for sure. Any other questions?
Nope, thanks, Doug.
Okay.
Thank you.
Marty?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Krista?
Yes.
And I'm also a yes. Next item on our agenda, I'm looking for a motion, and I'm going to change this slightly, because we're not approving a contract. I'm looking for a motion for the council to authorize the assessor Lauren Asslyn to enter into a contract with four assessments with KRT appraisal in the amount not to exceed $160,000.
So moved.
Second.
And I believe Lauren is with us, and we have packet page, starting on packet page 64, the one bid we received. So do we want to, any questions? Do you want Lauren to kind of talk about this proposal or preferences?
I had a couple of questions, but if she'd like to maybe give a...
Why don't you go ahead and give us a quick summary, Lauren, and then I'll open it to Krista for a question.
Hello, I'm Lauren Asslyn. I'm the town's assessor, and council had authorized the advertisement for proposals for a townwide revaluation of real estate assessments effective with the April 1st, 2024 commitment. We issued that on March 29th, the deadline was April 19th. We received one proposal from KRT appraisal, and I'm requesting that council allow me to negotiate a contract with the assistance of the town attorneys with KRT to implement that. To give you an overview of what we are requesting that they do, they're going to do a sales analysis using three years' worth of sales from the time that they begin. And they are going to update our neighborhood delineations and our cost schedules. They'll be involved in public outreach with me. I'll be working very closely with them on community outreach and making sure that residents are aware of what's going on. There will not be any onsite visits. Those are done when we do a full revale, and since this is just a, what we call an equalization project, where we bring the equity for all the properties in line, and we bring our certified ratio up to as close to 100% as we can, the, the onsite visits don't happen at this point. So...
Lauren, do you want to just kind of speak to why this needs to be done, the certified ratio issue that not just our town, but every town in the state of Maine is facing?
Of course.
Just to give a brief overview?
Right. So since COVID started, there's been a huge shift in the market, where sales prices have increased more so than I've ever seen and a lot of people have ever seen. So consistently, over the past three years, we've seen sales prices just outpacing what the state certifies our ratio at, and I'll explain what that means. We get audited by the state of Maine once a year, and what they do is they look at our sales, and they look at our assessments, and they come back with what's called a certified ratio, which is the, you know, what our assessments are in comparison to what the market is, is indicating. And once they do that, they provide us with a report, and we have a couple of options. We can certify at the ratio that they provide us, or we can change our values so that maybe if we need to increase our ratio, we can do that, which is what I had done last year. And, or we can, we can, there's a 10% leeway, that's a bit confusing, so I'll just, I'm, I'll, I'm not going to get too much into that. But, so our certified ratio last year was 79%. And with the changes that I had made the previous year, it brought us up to 88. And our goal is to be at or as close to 100% as possible. What happens when you reduce the certified ratio is we are not allowed to give the full homestead exemption, veterans exemption, blind exemption. Those exemptions get reduced to the certified ratio that we are at. So if we're at 95%, then I can only allow 95% of the homestead exemption to people who qualify. Same with the veterans. So it's a, it's a goal to keep it up to where we can certify at 100, because I, I do want to be able to give the residents the full benefit of the exemptions that the state of Maine allows. So...
Okay, thank you. Krista, your question?
Yeah, thank you, Lauren, for that overview. In your memo, you talk about what we've currently saved in the CIP for revaluation processes. And I know that at the beginning of next fiscal year, FY '24, we should have about $200,000 saved in the CIP, and this would pull out 160 from that $200,000. And as you noted earlier, this isn't a full revaluation, and we still need to complete that approximately 10 years after the last full revaluation was done, which I believe was done, what, 2018, 2019, last. I'm just wondering, will we still be on track for saving for that full revaluation in the CIP if we pull out this $160,000?
Yes, if we pull 160 out, that will leave us with approximately $40,000. If we continue to put $50,000 a year in the CIP, then, then 2031, we'll have $350,000 roughly. And of course, at this time, I don't know what the pricing is going to be, but as we get closer to that date, it'll be easy for me to see what the current costs are and adjust if necessary the few years before we get to it. Or the benefit of, of doing a, an equalization like this is if the market remains stable, you can push out a full revale if you're, you know, like I know the last revale, we waited 15 years and we hadn't done any adjustments in the meantime. But when you do adjustments incrementally between revales, it gives you the opportunity to push out a full revale if your certified ratio and your equity is where it needs to be. So if you have to wait an extra two or three years, that wouldn't be such a bad thing if you're keeping, if I'm keeping the values where they need to be and the certified ratio where it needs to be. So that's an option also.
Okay, yeah.
But, but we're on track.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure. But that's also a helpful context about being able to push it out if, if the market stays flat.
Yes.
Any other questions? Dan?
When we did the RPF, did you, did we solicit any bids, or did we just advertise it?
I'm sorry, excuse me. Sorry.
That's quite all right.
I apologize. I actually, the state has a list of qualified firms.
Yes.
And I sent emails to each one of those to tell them that we were looking for proposals. So I, I contacted each of them individually. We did advertise in the Portland Press Herald. We put it on our Facebook page. I did, I had our IT department do an email blast. So as far as your question, in addition to actually individually contacting all the qualified firms on the state of Maine website, we did do some outreach in addition to that as well.
Did you get any feedback as to, like, people are, have more work than they can do, or can you tell, give us any insight as to why we didn't get more interest?
I got three email responses indicating that the companies that responded did not have the time to perform the, the task at, you know, they were, they didn't have the staffing, or they were just already booked out.
Yep.
Yes, so I did receive three.
This is an outfit from Massachusetts. They have done a lot of work in England, Maine, New Hampshire, a little bit in Vermont, Scarborough, Camden. There are, there are a bunch of towns and cities in Maine that have used their services. And there were some recommendations from some of those Maine communities that spoke pretty favorably about not only the performance for the work that they had done, but some of them have used these folks for, for quite a few years. So I would have, I would always like to have seen more bids, but I think, given the fact that you cast the net as far as we could, and that we do have some good recommendations from other, I'll say, like-sized communities here in Maine, I feel a little bit more comfortable just going ahead with this.
And, and to that point, like I said, every town in the state of Maine is facing a certific- a certified ratio issue right now. So it's not just here, it's every town is underwater with their valuations. And the market has its own life to it, and there isn't anything that we can do at the local level to, to address valuations when out-of-state people or anyone in the state of Maine are willing to pay exorbitant prices, especially cash, it's going to drive the market, and that affects everybody across the state. Any other questions or comments?
No.
Marty?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Krista?
Yes.
I'm also a yes. Next item on...
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Lauren. Yep. Next item on the agenda is the chair report. We received word from both Senator King and Senator Collins offices that our grant application for the Libby Hill Road project has been selected by each of them to submit to the full Congress for funding consideration. Although there are several hurdles remaining, this is the furthest in the process we've gone. I'd like to thank Ann Gass, along with the staff, for their efforts in creating the application proposal. If we are selected, this could result in $850,000 worth of cash coming from the federal appropriations for us to do the work at Libby Hill Road. We have added our matching portion into the FY ' '24 budget, which is $60,000. So it's a considerable get. We did budget $50,000 last year, and the school is also budgeting $50,000 as match for that grant application. I want to remind everyone that nominations for volunteer awards are being accepted, and the deadline has been extended through May 26th, given the Gray Community Day is now set for June 24th. I did reach out to the Gray Historical Society, as they have submitted nominations in the past, to let them know. And Lacey had a question for me. She asked if we had any concerns with them requesting a Gray Community Day email. They use one for the Blueberry Festival, and it helps with their coordination, especially when they're trying to deal with outside organizations, which they may be opening that up to all volunteer organizations in town. So I don't know if anyone, I think it's $12 a month for an email address. So are there any concerns or thoughts on them being able to create one for the Gray Community Day?
Just a question. I know we were going to audit the email addresses that we have that are potentially not being used. I don't know if that's been done, but if it has, and we've eliminated some, I think it would make sense to add this one.
I don't think we've done it yet. It's on the community policy review outstanding. But yeah, I, I don't really have any issue with it. If it actually is successful and we have it annually, then it would make sense for them to have one separate for that event. But, okay, so I'll let her know. I had the pleasure of attending the public safety banquet on April 22nd, along with Marty and Nate. It was a lovely time, as always, and once again demonstrated how lucky the residents of Gray are for having such dedicated, experienced, and hard-working employees and volunteers who ensure our safety every single day. It was nice to witness the promotions and the recognitions. I attended the Gray Historical Society annual meeting and banquet as a GHS member. Nate was the guest speaker and did a wonderful job sharing and discussing the Village Vision Plan. I did need to put on my council hat to address some questions that came up. There was strong support for the plan, especially the infrastructure improvements created by the principal group around the large intersection and the Gray Historical Building. And I would recommend anybody who is here tonight that has not looked at the Village Vision Plan to please do so. I spent this past Saturday morning working with six Gray New Gloucester High School students at Libby Hill Trails for our spring cleanup. They did a great job helping to clear debris from the walking trails. More work will continue as we approach the longest-day 5K race, which is always held on June 21st. Registration is open now, and is the largest fundraiser for the Gray Community Endowment in support of the trails. And more information can be found at the Libby Hill Trails website. Schedule reminders, we have two workshops set for next week, Tuesday, May 9th, and Friday, May 12th, both at 5:00 PM. And I am looking to get at least one June workshop on the books prior to the next council session. So I am looking for feedback on Thursday, June 1st, and Tuesday, June 13th. If you could look at your schedules, please? June 1st is Thursday? Well, we'll, this, we'll nail down the, the day first.
I'm, I'm, should be free either day.
Both?
Yeah.
It was the 1st and what?
The 13th.
The one thing about the 13th is that is election day for municipal offices.
Yeah, no, we can't do it then. How about the 12th?
I can do the 12th, not the 1st.
Not the 1st?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'll be away, I might be able to zoom in, but I can't promise you I can.
The 12th, I would need to get coverage for...
Would the 15th be better?
Yeah, I could do the 15th.
15th works.
15th?
Yep.
Marty, are you available the 15th?
June 15th?
Yep.
Yes.
Oh, wait a minute, no, it has to be before that, or I'm not available. Nice try, no. How about, okay, so the 12th was a no? Was that right, or?
I could make it work.
You could make it work.
I just would have to check on...
June 12th, I, I can do that.
And, and you can, Dan?
Yes.
All right, so just let me know, Krista.
Okay, about the 12th.
Yeah, and the 1st, I'm, I'm kind of considering maybe doing, is Doug still here? Maybe doing the follow-up Route 100 public forum on the 1st instead, Dan?
Okay.
So if that's okay with you?
Yep.
Okay. I'm not 100% sure. If that doesn't work out, then we can try another date.
What time on the 12th?
Uh, what, what's, what works for you guys? Is 5, you're the one who might have coverage, right?
Right, I mean, if I...
6, what time?
If I don't have a problem with coverage, I can come whenever. If I do, it would need to either be in the afternoon or later.
So earlier? 4:00 PM? Would 4:00 PM be better, or? How about, you let me know, and I'll confirm the time? It'll be in the afternoon?
Okay.
Okay. Okay. Yep, I'll, I'll let you know. And that's all I have. And next item on the agenda is report from the town manager.
Thank you, council. I have a few items to add to my written report, but before I do, does anyone have any questions about that?
No.
No.
Okay, thank you. First of all, I want to applaud you, council, for your multi-year appeal to the Maine Department of Transportation, MTA, to have Route 26 designated as the bypass rather than Short Shaker Road. It was a tremendous amount of work. The signage, I'm sure people have seen, the signs have been changed and updated, and they're in the process of finishing that. So I just want to say congratulations for your successful effort. Also, I wanted to note that I'm attending the meeting this evening from Cambridge, Massachusetts, where I'm attending a class on negotiation strategies at Harvard University. I want to thank the town and the town council for this professional development opportunity. I appreciate it, and I'm learning a lot. The town has accepted the resignation of the finance director, which is effective today. I will work with the human resources director, John Hart, to immediately post the position opening and ensure coverage of the core duties until a new finance director is hired. The town wishes Ms. Johnston well in her future endeavors. until a new finance director is hired. The town wishes Ms. Johnston well in her future endeavors. I am pleased to announce that I have received the credentialed manager designation from the ICMA, the International City and County Management Association, of which I've been a member for several years. With this credential, I am one of over thirteen hundred local government management professors, professionals currently credentialed through the ICMA voluntary credentialing program. And I'm just very excited, uh, to have made that accomplishment. I wanted to share that with you. In the council packet, you will note that there are, uh, a few addendum items that I've added. On page one oh two is information from the American Law Association about the trek across Maine. This year on June eighteenth, the trek is coming through Gray. And there is a route map included in the, uh, letter we received from them. I wanted to note the very good news on page one of four of your packet from the Scout Troop twenty nineteen, that, uh, one of their members, Victoria Wild, has attained the rank of Eagle Scout and that's quite an accomplishment for her. Uh, it's not been very long. It's only been four years since young women have been allowed to, uh, be in the program and become Eagle Scouts. And so I'd like to commend her and would invite council, if you like, to also, uh, send some, uh, form of commendation to her. And if I can help with that, I'd be happy to, certainly. And then, um, last of all, I've just passed along some correspondence about a paving project, a multi-town paving project from the DOT. And I've included two changes to position descriptions. One is for the head of circulation position. The director of the library has made a small modification to the, um, uh, position requirements and qualifications. And then we've also, uh, included here the summer internship program job description, just to be consistent with our other employment practices, to make sure that our summer intern, uh, is also provided with, uh, an official job description. So that's all that I have for my report. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Um, Nate, the only question I have or, or suggestion I have is that the, um, trek across Maine information be posted and maybe set up a timer so that on June seventeenth or sixteenth and seventeenth and maybe the eighteenth, we remind people, um, and post the map. The, uh, route that they're taking is, um, going to be, um, busy, um, with vehicle traffic. Um, and so I think it would be helpful if people are reminded that there are going to be a large number of cyclists, um, on those roads during that timeframe.
I will coordinate with, uh, IT on that.
Okay. Any other comments for?
Thank you very much.
Dan?
Nate, um, just really quickly, I was wondering, it wasn't clear from, um, MDOT's memo to you what paving they were actually doing in town.
It, it, it was not clear. If you'd like, I would try to get some more, um, details on that.
Yeah, because I think for the same thing, I, you know, um, it would be nice to be able to tell people when, or at least that it's going to happen.
I'll follow up on that.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Great. Next item on the agenda is committee reports. Marty?
Okay, I'll start with, uh, Wild Blueberry Festival meets May fourth at ten AM. The topics will be communications and advertising. The finance committee meeting was postponed due to, to administrative, administrative issues. Uh, the planning board meets May eleventh at seven PM. Um, among the issues they'll dis- discuss is accessory dwelling units and the village area loop trail. And the last one is the zoning board. Uh, we met April twenty-sixth. They discussed the, the Getz variance. Uh, Debbie Getz, uh, gave a narrative on her, uh, on her business proposal there. The owner of sixteen Yarmouth Road spoke. They approved a four-bedroom bed and breakfast. The notice of appeal was granted. And the parking issue goes to the planning board. The next issue that was discussed was the three oh nine Portland Road appeal. Uh, there was, uh, three attorneys present, one for the zoning board, one for the town and one for the appellant. Uh, let's see, uh, the zoning board would like to have a workshop with the town council to discuss this, this, this type of issue. The, uh, appeal was denied by a vote of, of, of three to one and that's all I have.
Thank you. Dan?
Uh, yeah, I can piggyback a little bit on what Marty said. The council has already, um, pitched a workshop with both the planning board and the ZBA, actually, so that we can, um, have some alignment, um, not only in the roles, but also to troubleshoot processes and see especially what the other two groups think, um, we can do to help make their processes better. The planning board also at their April eleventh, pardon me, May eleventh meeting will be discussing the second phase of the Stillwater Pines subdivision, which is up off of Woodcock Lane. The only other thing that I have is a personal comment regarding, um, the statement that was read earlier tonight. It, we work diligently to make sure we're giving good information. And the fact that I clearly was not providing people with good information is both an embarrassment and a disappointment on my part. You play with, you know, the information that you have and you hope it's, um, accurate. Uh, it's unfortunate that this has happened. Um, I apologize for my role in that. I think we've done, uh, a good job and, and we will continue to get this information out in time for people to digest it. And if it changes their point of view or it changes their decision in the process, uh, they will have the opportunity to do that when they vote.
Thank you.
That's all I have. Thanks.
Um, yep, I actually have quite a few updates. I've been really busy the last two weeks. Uh, so just bear with me. Um, the next ordinance advisory committee meeting, uh, is yet to be determined, um, but I will get back to you when, um, we have a firm date for that. The resiliency committee, um, we had a check-in with our cohort of Gray, New Gloucester and Durham representatives, um, with, and also two oh seven permaculture on April nineteenth to identify next steps and needs as a group. And we can plan to continue meeting as a cohort, um, every two weeks to maintain that progress and the coalition building opportunity. Our next meeting, um, in that cohort, um, on May third. The next regular meeting of the full resiliency committee is occurring on, oh, excuse me, occurred on April twenty-seventh. We did not have a full quorum at that meeting, but we discussed, um, we brainstormed programming on GCTV and discussed resources with Randy Visser and Kyle Hadniak. Uh, and Randall, Randy and Kyle both offered their assistance going forward as we identify, um, content for that. The, um, CRP, the community, community resilience partnership, uh, led by the state, is hosting a Communities Leading on Climate conference on May eleventh from eight thirty to four, um, which you can attend via Zoom or, um, going directly to the location in Wells. Uh, I will plan to be, uh, zooming in in the morning, as will other representatives from the cohort I mentioned earlier. Um, GP Cog executive committee, uh, updates. We, I worked this last week with Tom Bell of GP Cog to draft and submit an op-ed to the Maine Sunday Telegram on the importance of independent local news coverage for a healthy and responsive municipal government, particularly as many of Maine's papers are in the market for new ownership. Um, the op-ed was published this Sunday, April thirtieth. The full executive committee met on April twenty-fifth, where we completed a review, an annual review for the executive director. We also reviewed the FY twenty-four budget for GP Cog and recommended final adoption at the general assembly. Um, and we also heard a presentation from their economic development director, Paul Johnson, on a new short-term rental member service. Um, they're offering what they call soft services, um, review of existing regional ordinances on short-term rentals, um, engagement with stakeholders, drafting short-term rental ordinances and supporting, and then also a supporting software program they've developed. The proprietary, um, software developed by GP Cog staff, um, is an, uh, effort to curb costs of purchasing enforcement and tracking services, which can cost approximately two hundred dollars per license. Um, so that is thousands of dollars for municipalities to manage each year. Um, the software they've developed, um, has individual logins for each town to maintain local autonomy, but registrants, um, so residents of the town who have short-term rentals can also add their own properties and pay any relevant fees, um, with a self-service login. There's mapping capabilities on the software and downloadable data that pulls listing from, um, short-term rental websites, listings from those websites. And you can identify properties that aren't registered if you have registration requirements. And it also has the capability, if we have, um, fees associated with violations, for printing violations directly from that software with a listing of any screenshots that were identified, and then communicates those violations to each local, um, code enforcement officer. Um, Mr. Johnson of GP Cog has noted that he's available for any in-person presentations if we desire to see more. Um, then this software's, um, really interesting given our, our current ordinance on, that created a registry without any fees, um, for violations. Um, one of the reasons we created the registry was because we did not have a sense for how many short-term rentals are happening in Gray and what that means for, um, the availability of affordable rentals in town. Um, so this would actually potentially eliminate the need for that ordinance because we can track that sort of thing, um, with just the software available. And the, they're offering this, uh, software as a pilot for one year for members, free. Um, after that, they're projecting that it would be about twenty-five percent of the cost of those for-profit services, so twenty-five percent of the two hundred dollars per license fee. The general assembly for GP Cog is happening on May twenty-fifth at two o'clock. And they're also looking for their one-minute what works, um, volunteers. So if we have any ideas for what we might want to present on what's working, I would take, um, suggestions for that. The GP Cog Sustainability Roundtable reconvened this month. They, we met on April twenty-fifth. Uh, GP Cog staff, um, working on sustainability issues, reviewed, um, state and federal grant programs that are available, particularly for EV charging and sustainability projects for municipalities. There's quite a number here. Um, they listed EECBG, which is kind of like this, the, the Community Development Block Grant, except for, um, sustainability projects. There's eight million dollars nationally for small and medium municipalities in that funding program. There's the empower workplace charging, um, effort for municipalities since they are technically employers, and there's a host of others, which I can, um, foretenate, um, just for consideration. That's all I have.
That's quite a bit.
Yeah.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yeah.
Yep.
Tonight, or in my mailbox, I received a mailing from GP Cog that sort of showed all of the services that they provide and, um, which communities are taking advantage of which ones. And I wondered if we could, um, ask Nate to take a look at that and see if there is maybe more opportunities for us to take advantage of some of the things that GP Cog has to offer, because I noticed there's other communities that have dipped pretty heavily into that.
Yeah.
And there might be some savings for us if we, if we researched that a little bit more.
Yeah, and I think also sharing that information on the website would be good for people to understand the benefit. I mean, we get our, GP Cog dues are made up with just our salt bid.
Yes.
Um, so the savings that we get from a GP Cog salt bid pays for our dues plus. Um, and then we get additional services on top of that for, um, which are included in our member dues. So I think it's important for residents to understand the value that they're getting from, from that organization. Um, for me, uh, I don't have any, anything to report other than the meetings. Open space will meet tomorrow at six PM. Recreation moved our meeting to next Monday, the eighth, at six PM due to quorum issues. And the Dry Mills Schoolhouse is set to meet on May fifteenth at four PM. Next item is council correspondence and activities. Marty?
Yes, on April twenty-second, I attended the fire rescue banquet. It was, was very nice. I'm, I'm impressed with the esprit de corps and the morale, and that's all I have.
Great, thank you. Dan?
I have none to report.
Krista?
Um, I had a check-in with Brad Fogg, the chair of the ZBA and town manager Nate Rudy, to discuss legal and procedural requirements for members and proposed meeting with the council and, um, planning board, um, at a future date. Uh, at the time, Brad said he would like to address, um, some of our concerns with members first. Um, and we also encouraged open communication from the ZBA to council and planning board for any issues with ordinances that they observed and perhaps a future joint meeting. But it sounds like perhaps he was, um, based on Marty's report, um, interested in the joint meeting again. Uh, I also had coffee with Ann Gass and an inquiry from Matt Sturgis about paving on Route one hundred north from the village to the town line. I informed him that is in the MDOT's work plan, I believe, this year or perhaps next. Um, and they're trying to resolve some right-of-way issues, um, to, um, start, begin that paving. I also had an email from Ann Gass regarding L, the current legislation, LD sixteen thirty-four, and an email from John Hedman, the president of the Maine Metal Woods Homeowners Association, regarding the open space plan. Uh, I will be presenting at the Maine Metal Woods HOA meeting on May seventh in regards to that topic. And then, as I mentioned earlier, I have, the op-ed, um, was printed in the Portland Press Herald on the thirtieth and I had some feedback from residents, um, just thanking me for that. And also a call from Bill Nimitz, um, former Press Herald columnist, also with thanks.
Great, thank you. Uh, I received an email from two Crystal Lake residents inquiring about the status and in support of a mooring ordinance. I advise we recently discussed this and it will be reconsidered in the next council session. I included Krista and Nate on the emails so the issue can be carried forward into the next session. I received a follow-up from Gerald Fosset regarding the road discussing, which is pending workshop space, and I hope to have that scheduled at one of our remaining workshops. I received an email from a resident who is assisting another resident with donating a bench for one of the walking paths in the village and that, I guess, has been coordinated with staff and has been addressed. And that's all I have. All set, Dan?
Yeah, um, yes.
Okay.
Counselor Curtis is not on.
No, he isn't, so. Um, I am looking for a motion to adjourn the meeting at eight twenty-eight PM.
So move.
Second, please?
Second.
Marty?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Krista?
Yes.
And I'm also a yes. I can.